Routine attendant. Number one. Order authorizing the engagement letter for Glover, Young, Hammack, Walton and Simmons, PLLC to service city attorney.
I do have some questions for specifically Mr. Simmons. If you could answer a couple of questions with the council regarding some court documents that were provided to us. In particular, we understand that Mr. Andy Davis with Compton, Witherspoon represents the city in drug seizure cases, but it was recently brought to my attention and then through these documents to the council's attention that we actually have the right to free representation in drug seizure cases. And it seems as if it's been misrepresented that the council's been made aware of this. So could we ask for clarification as to why there's been such miscommunication between Glover, Young and the city council in as it relates to this matter? Because I don't think that any of us would recall a conversation where you were asked who would like to continue with Mr. Andy Davis or who would like to go the representation to the DA's office as it relates to drug seizure cases.
Yeah, I'm really, I'm really not. I mean, if you would have called me and asked me, that was a very long, eight-part question. And I had no idea what you were going to ask. And I don't think that has anything to do with what's on the table, first of all. I think this is a totally separate aspect.
Well, I think when you consider that the city council has to rely on our attorneys. I mean, it's a matter of trust, really. And when it comes to our attention that misrepresentation's been made in court on behalf of the city of Meridian, then I think that is an issue that we should consider right now as we're dealing with this.
Councilman Lindman, what case is that that you referred to?
This is a city of Meridian case versus a defendant who had $104,000 seized.
And what misrepresentation are you implying?
In these records on pages 16, 17 and 18, which each council member has a copy of, Mr. Simmons and Mr. Davis both claim that the council's been made fully aware that we have, that we're obligated to receive free representation in the DA's office and that on the day of May 15th, that we were made aware of that. And that we were made fully aware, and that's repeated multiple times, but I don't think any of the council members have been made aware of that. And I would also like to know, obviously we can't have that answer right now, but there's a certain dollar around associated with how much we've paid Mr. Davis throughout all of these drug seizure cases and without even realizing that we can receive free representation, that's a significant cost to the city that could have been avoided.
Well, I think it's a very complicated thing that you brought up. And I mean, I, we can talk about it, but I think, you know, number one, you know, you does gotcha, I think, where you go and pass out, I haven't had a chance to read the transcript through it, trying to ambush me. You know, we can talk about it, but you know, Mr. Davis didn't either. And I think it would be fair, if you want to be fair, to have him come in and explain what he does and go through it in a methodical way as opposed to the ambush, you know, we got a common check here that's on the table and then you're trying to interrogate a separate deal. We have different employees, it's a civil service position, right? And another thing that you're forgetting is that the law was changed recently and there are legacy cases. And they're non legacy cases. And this is a very complicated deal with drug seizure funds. I mean, we're talking about a regular contract. We don't do the drug seizure stuff. We haven't done it. And as far as the free representation that you talk about, it's complicated because they're pre-existing cases. And you're talking about active litigation that involves Mr. Stewart Parish, the city of Meridian, that we've been asked whether there's a seizure fund, there's an active case. Now, really, we're comfortable having a debate in, in the middle of the city council, who we got some else on the table, having a debate with you about an active fine that you inserted yourself into, it appears to be. So let's, you know, this isn't the forum to try to go and gotcha and pull in some, you know, out of context discussion. No, no, no. Because if you want to do that, then we need to bring Mr. Davis in. We need to sit down in orderly fashion. We need to look at what you're talking about. We need to talk about the free litigation, the free statute change case and the post statute change cases. We need to get, this has been going on for a while.
The 2012 case.
Yeah, 2012 case, we've got millions of dollars in seizure funds that the city has hired Mr. Davis to get back for us. And then the post statute change cases, that is different and those are being dealt with in a different fashion.
I think I could, because we're getting a little long and drawn out. I think the question was just a matter of, do we have the opportunity to get free representation as it relates to drug abuse?
Yes, we do have that opportunity now since the law has been changed, which allows the district attorney's office to represent the city on any seizure funds, agents, not free to get 20% of the seizure funds. However, the agency, the local law enforcement agency, whoever seizes the funds has the option to choose the DA's office, which means that if the money is awarded, the law enforcement agency gets 8%, the DA's office gets 20%. However, our agency has chosen to go federal. We deal with HSI recent days where we received money out of interstate rather than doing the 80-20 money that could have gotten to the DA's office. This case went further, which led to another $190,000 that we got out of the case in Atlanta, Georgia, and it keeps going. When we go federal, we follow the money along with the federal government. Going to the local on a case that doesn't seem to be a large or cartel-related case, sure, we can do that by 80-20, but on our larger cases, we go federal because that opens us up, whatever the bid is, we get a portion. Our turn is up to the local law enforcement agency.
Do we ever take advantage of the free option or?
It's not a free option.
Well, the 80-20 option. Do we ever?
We have not, all just came into effect when we last won.
Mr. Davis represents us. He has a set fee.
Mr. Davis is a city employee who represented us in these drug seizures.
There is no split.
There's no split, Mr. Davis.
It's just a set fee.
Whatever the city pays, whatever it's out there for sale.
To me, the question's simple. Why is it that it would be represented to a judge that the council has been made aware of these statutes?
Look, you're injecting yourself into an active old case. You're taking it out of context. And now, I'm not going to engage you, we're done, okay? Pause, let's sit down in order.
I motion to table.
Let's talk about the exact thing you're talking about. And you're talking about the 2012 case he's been working on for three or four years, Mr. Lindman. And that were you aware of that he was hired and then employed, you'll sit here forever? I mean, surely.
I motion to table until we can have Mr. Davis and everyone sit down in orderly fashion to discuss this matter at length.
We don't want to go back to court.
Do you have a second?
No, this has nothing to do with it. I think right this city.
Everybody ready, vote. So order authorizing the engagement letter for Glover, Young, Hammack, Walton, Simmons, PLLC to service city attorney. All in favor?
Aye.
So move.
Contrary to statements that were made in yesterday's city council meeting, the court records that I was referencing are from a transcript that is dated May 15th, 2018. And so while the case may have originated in 2012, I'm still referring to an event that took place this year in which the city's attorneys misrepresented the city council and the council's wishes to a judge by saying, when asked the following question, quote, "Attorney Simmons, sir, same question to you, same question to you, because now you represent the city of Meridian as one of the attorneys of record or in the law firm that represents them. With all the woes financially," and I'm playing devil's advocate now, "but with all the financial woes that they're having, have you also explained to them that this DA's office has been up here and it's now available to them free to use as opposed to spending money on this case?" The response, "They have been made very aware of that and the city administration has been made aware of that. The city council has been made aware of that and they understand and they have been very happy with the representation Mr. Davis has provided." So the discussion continues on for some time, but the important thing here, and it's not very complex at all, is that the city attorneys have gone before a judge and misrepresented what the city council would like because the city council's never even had this discussion. This has never been a conversation. And furthermore, the claim that Mr. Davis makes on page 17 or 16 is that he actually spoke to the city council the same day. But May 15th, we had a 5 o'clock council meeting, so there's no way that they had actually spoken to the city council the same day. So when we're voting to approve the city's attorneys for another year, to me, this is a big deal because it's just a breach of trust. And it's not the only instance in which trust has become a factor to consider when dealing with city attorneys. And I know for a fact that conversations with a couple of other council members in previous months have shown me at least that this isn't something that I'm, I'm not the only one who feels this way, that other council members have also expressed concerns about dealing with the city's attorneys. And for whatever reason, when it's put to a vote, rather than actually challenge the status quo and say publicly what they would say privately, instead you get a four to one vote in which I'm the only person voting against this. But it's clear that this issue exists. It's not something that just goes away because you vote for it and pretend that it's not happening. So we still have to find a way to conduct city business and move on, but this is a very real issue that will continue.
Number four is claims docket.
So I found the guy with the payroll information request and while I can't disclose the actual documents to the public, what I can do is tell the council that I found issues with 50% of the employees that are receiving documents on abuses of vacation, abuses of overtime, fraudulent documents justifying pay increases. I don't see how in good conscience the claims docket could be approved as it is without a forensic audit to really look more deeply into these issues. I only requested information for six employees and these issues did come up. So to approve payroll for however many total number of employees we have, 500, right, I think that would just be careless without actually taking the time to look and see if these issues are happening on more than just three instances. But out of the six employees I did request information on, I did find these issues with three. So just that for your consideration.
I've been saying for months now that we need to do a forensic audit of the city. And now that I've requested these payroll documents and after several weeks of waiting, I received them, I discovered that there were a series of payroll abuses as it relates to vacation time, overtime and fraudulent justification letters that appear to be coming from a department head that actually didn't sign it or write the letter justifying a $12,000 pay increase for one employee in particular. So I only requested information on six employees and I turned up these types of issues with three of them that I was able to identify. And I'm not even an expert, but I know that with around 600 city employees, there is most likely similar issues throughout the payroll and that's something a forensic audit would uncover. Again, I know through talking with other council members that there has been support for an audit in the past, but for whatever reason, conversations that are had privately, they don't happen publicly at this point. And so what you'll see as you continue to watch the video about the claims docket is that some council members are going to acknowledge that they understand that there are issues with the payroll, but they're still voting for it. And so it's important to remind everyone that city council members are personally liable if we knowingly approve expenditures on the claims docket that aren't legal. And so if it's ever found that a vote has been cast by a council member that is aware of an issue but still voted for it anyways, then they're going to be personally liable for that and the money will have to come out of their pocket.
Just as a final example of the council of the types of issues that exist with payroll, last year, we actually paid overtime to an employee in a pay period that they were in Disney World. So these are the types of things that are going on, these time records are being reviewed by Mr. McAllister.
If we can just get that information ahead of time.
I would definitely dislike this because all of this stuff during our budget time and, you know, payroll, all of these things, we're going to be having those meetings. And there's justification for whatever, but some of these things, I pray it's true to not happen.
I'd ask you to just continue, but I'd never do a follow-up meeting for whatever reason.
I have all the payroll documents here, so if y'all want to go into executive session, it needs to be approved.
That's a council decision. We're going into executive session. We don't like that decision.
Everybody ready for a claim now? All in favor?
Sorry, Dave.
So here we have a situation where, again, the city council has been made aware of some of the findings that I discovered in reviewing the payroll records that I had requested, which was two years of time sheets for six employees and the supporting documentation to justify any pay increases that may have been received. And just for your information, in section 305 of the employee handbook, as it relates to time cards in preparation for the payroll, this is the process that's outlined. It says, "Employees must complete and sign a time card, which is a record of the hours worked during the work period and which will be used in preparing the payroll. Some employees complete or fill in a time card and others punch a time clock. In other instances, an electronic time record system may be utilized. In all cases, the employee is responsible for the accurate and complete recordation of time. All sick leave, vacation, holidays and overtime taken must be correctly recorded by the employee and approved by their department head. Fraudulently preparing a time entry for yourself or another employee will result in a disciplinary action up to and including termination." Well, a side note about that last sentence, and maybe I should get into this some other time, but there has been an instance already where a employee in a supervisory position fraudulently filled out time cards for city employees who were working for state games. And that employee has since been given somewhat of a promotion. They're being listed as the Assistant Director of Parks and Recreation now. And that's funny because there isn't even a billeted city position called Assistant Director of Parks and Recreation. Instead, we have something called the Director of Operations. So it's funny that they give a made up position to someone who has actually fraudulently, fraudulently filled in time cards for a number of city employees already, whereas the employee handbook says that that would be, the result of that would be disciplinary action up to and including termination. But the point at hand is that the process for time cards, and that's basically what the employee handbook says, but also received an email in the past week from city attorneys saying that, quote, "I would encourage you to contact Mr. McAllister to get a briefing on procedures. For your information, I'm advised that employees who work in the executive department at City Hall and Community Development keep time on their computers. Mr. McAllister reviews the computer time records at City Hall and the Director of Community Development reviews the computer records of the employees in that department. Then before payment, the computer records are reviewed by Mr. McAllister and Ms. Walker. The computer records on the employees named in your record request were included in the records you have provided. I encourage you to communicate with the mayor or CAO to respond to your questions." But the issue is here in the council meeting, I pointed out that, for example, there was an employee who got overtime while they were in Disney World and that Mr. McAllister reviewed those time sheets, but he claims to have no knowledge of that. So we have a situation where, again, we can't even trust the people that we're communicating with when conducting city business because they're willing to lie to you on the spot. And furthermore, what you see here is another example of, I did all the work to get the payroll information, looked through it, made these discoveries, made my findings clear to the city council, and yet there's still a three to two vote in favor of the claims docket. So carelessly voting for it despite the fact that there could be a number of abuses happening with city payroll throughout the city and even offering to go into an executive session, you get no answer and instead we rush to a vote. Even though I had all the payroll documents there at the council meeting ready to show, no one seemed interested in finding out the truth. And I did sign a confidentiality agreement for some of those records because some of them aren't public. And so those can't actually be disclosed publicly, but I am allowed to disclose my findings.
And number five is on the docket, partially because of the discussions that we keep having. Order authorizing the claims docket to be split into three parts beginning August 22nd, 2018. The three parts will be expenditures for less payroll, B, all payroll that falls within job pay bands, C, all payroll that falls outside of job pay bands, and all payroll that goes to the duty position. That will put us in a position, in my view, and again, I'm talking about my view, where if there's an issue with the claims docket, we don't put shitty employees who are living check to check, which hopefully there aren't too many, in a situation where they're going to be paid. What we want to put the city in a situation where we are not paying bills that can end us up in litigation or something else from now on. So the main questions with the claims docket, I think, to have been payroll. The lawyers have been working with us to pull that out. Our goal is for anybody in the scene to be moved to the bill so that it will not be an issue. And we will work with the administration, with civil service, with internal resources to try to get that in place. So do I have a motion?
Second. I think you're going to run into issues in actually implementing any solution because if you're relying on moving resources to enact some of these changes, then one thing you're going to run into is just like the fraudulent justification for a pay increase that I found, that has to be coming from HR. And so to rely on HR to solve the problems that they're obviously causing deliberately, I just don't see how that makes much sense.
I don't have a crystal ball as to how that will turn out, but you guys should start somewhere. If somebody has a better idea.
I do want to say one thing, that accusations can be made and in some of these divisions, there are often things to recruit people in those divisions. So when you say a lot of this and you say what you say, there are potential repercussions or slander against these individuals. You can potentially make a difference.
Yeah, I have the payroll documents here and I could easily.
Madam President, I'm going back to what I said previously, without knowing why some, some of these people may be outside of the pay band because of longevity, they may be doing more than one job. I'm not comfortable with doing this until we actually go through our budget process and we have an opportunity maybe to talk with, I forgot how many they said are outside of the pay band, but I think it would be good for us to interview those individuals and find out if they are outside of the pay band and why, and if it's justified. And then we, as a council, we may need to then look at increasing the pay band in that area. That's just not.
That would probably be two weeks or two and a half weeks.
I think it's going to take longer than that to really get the answers to justify.
I think if you don't put it in.
But we're getting the three votes to pass the claims docket every meeting. I don't see why.
We're giving it because I am afraid to vote against it because I don't want the city to not be paying bills and I don't want employees to not get their checks.
I think if there's a feeling of not voting for the claims docket, it should be voted nay. But to single out individuals that may fall within this, that we don't know about that are outside of the pay band, I think that would be unfair, just like not paying.
Echoing Councilman Houston's remarks here that if council members feel that there are issues with the claims docket, then they should be voting against it. And so here we have an instance where, again, it's probably necessary to remind that if council members are voting on something that they know is wrong, that shouldn't be going on and they're still going to approve it anyways, then you're going to eventually be held personally liable for the money that you're approving if it is in fact true that there are things going on that aren't legal. And I think just from the payroll documents that I've reviewed, the chances are that there's most likely something that you just voted on that isn't legal.
Number eight is the question of payment to Mr. McGrueter. Make motion.
Second. Our seat, I think this notification is, I mean, if we owe the man a mention or do we?
Yeah, to me, it seems obvious with the handbook. For one, on section 411, administrative leave, it does say that administrative leave shall be with pay. And so that's one thing to consider. But additionally, there's McGrueter's documentation of meetings that he's had and what he was told in those meetings. And it appears to me he should have been paid already, but that the reason that didn't happen, then he had to follow up instead.
We have.
He was, he was placed on administrative pension out leave. He was a department head and he serves the will of the legislature. There is a dispute he has with the city over that is promptly going to be litigated at some point and probably prompt to talk about that. And the council can vote to pay him, but then it might subject the city to pay any other person who feels they've been promptly terminated or put on disciplinary leave to get pay that they may not intend to. But from my understanding, it is HR fault. So you get your per's time, which is vacation, sick leave, like your per's holiday time. If you're not an active employee in good standing, you're not to pay. The term active never appears without employee handbook as it relates to holiday pay or administrative leave or sick leave or anything related to that.
Could you research that and let all the council know since we all received this communication? I mean, do a thorough, I mean.
I think, I think it is important to know that people was placed on administrative leave without a pay, while investigation was one investigation.
I think this was about holiday pay or something.
I think he needs to make a formal request to get this to the administration, the city of Meridian, this is an enforcement fire. There's ongoing litigation concerning this. I don't know if he made a formal request conceding, asking for this. I don't know. They got a copy of memo or letter, note or something that somebody copied to me. I don't, I don't have that data. They want to get into that. I think the attorneys can get together with some other folks, look at the personnel and see who can, who can. This, to me, this is not council business.
Thank you. So all five. Okay. Page six. Page seven. Page eight. Page nine. Page ten. Page eleven. Page twelve. Page thirteen. Page fourteen. Page fifteen. Page sixteen. Page seventeen. Page eighteen. Page nineteen. Page twenty. Page twenty-one. Page twenty-two. Page twenty-three. Page twenty-four. Page twenty-five. Page twenty-six. Page twenty-seven. Page twenty-eight. Page twenty-nine. Page thirty. Page thirty-one. Page thirty-two. Page thirty-three. Page thirty-four. Page thirty-five. Page thirty-six. Page thirty-seven. Page thirty-eight.
So as you may know, Mr. McGrueter, the city's former Parks and Recreation Director, was placed on suspension in, I think it was around May 30th, which was about a week after he first contacted Mayor Percy Plan in an attempt to invoke his whistleblower rights by making the mayor aware of wrongdoings that are going on with abuses of payroll, the same or similar issues that I've found with payroll documents that I've reviewed myself. And in attempting to make those issues aware to the mayor, it appears that he was subsequently retaliated against by being placed on suspension. There, of course, the claim was made that that was because of an ongoing investigation by the state auditor's office, but I haven't been provided any documentation that actually says that he's under investigation, whereas I have been provided documentation that another employee is under a state auditor's investigation. So if Mr. McGrueter was also under investigation, I would think logically that they would be able to show me that documentation as well, but they had, have never been able to produce that. able to show me that documentation as well, but they have never been able to produce that. So a few things in that discussion were just factually incorrect, such as the term active employee, the claim by the city in the follow-up letter where they're telling Mr. McGurder that in accordance with the City of Meridian Leave Policy, the 304 holiday hours would not be able to, that they're not going to compensate him for those hours because he's not an active employee. Well, the interesting thing is that in the city's handbook, that term active is never used. So the city attorney is just using a term that isn't even in the handbook, and the city's HR director is just using a term that isn't even in the handbook. As it relates to administrative leave in section 411 of the handbook, it says that "From time to time, the mayor or chief administrative officer may, at his or her discretion, send home or prohibit the return to work in the employee upon issuing a notice of administrative leave to the employee. Administrative leave shall be with pay and shall not affect any other leave available to the employee." So here we have an exact situation that just goes along with what I've been saying, that the city administration is picking and choosing who they want to use city policies for, and they're picking and choosing which policies they want to actually stick to and which ones they want to just make up and revise as they go. And we've seen several instances where city officials have been placed on administrative leave with pay. Mr. McGurder, for whatever reason, is a case where he's placed on administrative leave without pay. Furthermore, the claim that we shouldn't have been discussing that in a council meeting because of potential litigation, I think is just bogus because there is no litigation. And so you can't not discuss something because you think that maybe in the future there would be litigation about it. That's just not how this works. So the multiple claims that we shouldn't be discussing it because of potential litigation, I believe is just an attempt to prevent the council from discussing the issue, which is definitely not the role of a city attorney. Furthermore, I think when you consider that the city has placed on administrative leave a police officer a year ago who assaulted a man, they placed him on administrative leave with pay. Then you have the chief administrative officer accused of assault following a debate over water bill, but the chief administrative officer isn't placed on administrative leave. So there again, you have a situation where there's no consistency with city's policies and procedures. It's just, let's make it up as we go, and if it's someone who we want to treat specially, then of course they get special treatment, and if it's someone who, say, is a whistleblower, then they get a different type of treatment. And I don't think that this is the type of thing that should continue, and for that reason, I guess I'm at least satisfied that we tabled the motion to authorize this payment for Mr. McGurder. But it's an issue that, as we take up this issue in the future, it'll be interesting to see what the administration says about why they didn't pay Mr. McGurder. Because in fact, their letter in response to Mr. McGurder just doesn't actually make any sense when you compare what was told versus what the city handbook says.
Number eight is taken. Number nine is, we're moving from, yeah, we're moving from a defendant end of, the order operating a mission for two dollars for a dunk one to kickball. Any motion?
So.
Second.
Second.
Question?
Could we, just for clarification, have the council made aware of what the procedure for deposit cash is?
Okay, the procedure for the deposit cash, once the money is taken up at a game, there is a receipt, there's, you know, the mail is taken up, there's a receipt, it is logged into a spreadsheet, and immediately brought over to finance and records where we can go through a receipt as well.
Okay.
You're talking about the actual event?
Yes.
I'm supposed to give a receipt?
No, not a receipt. If it's a fee, like a $2 fee for an entrance, we just, we reconcile at the end of the game, make sure that's accounted for, and then it's turned in immediately.
So when the game's recognized, does that take the?
It is logged up, right. If the game is at night, we do log up, we do log it down.
So we don't have employees going off the cash?
No, we do not have employees going off the cash.
All right.
We have signed Parks and Recreation employees into one of these events.
We do, we have assigned employees, so we just, you know, make sure we do our checks and balances with that as well.
Hey, did I see a precedent here that we're going to get on where any event the city has, we're going to charge an admission fee, we're going to broke it off, we're going to make, I don't know whether play kickball.
Right.
Me, this is a precedent. I don't mind charging a fee, that's what comes to. But how do you control who comes, who doesn't come? Is it names, you bring a two-year-old, we gotta pay another $2, huh?
Well, this particular one is a dollar kickoff, as we looked at some of the others as well, but we want to see how this goes.
So if Kim is playing kickball, she brings her children with her, they're going to have to pay a fee, it's got lots of money.
So tonight, it's a fee.
Okay, and make sure.
Now, okay, are there a lot of people coming to these events? I mean, why do we need to charge $2 for people that's already paying taxes?
It's been brought to our attention by Thomas Allen, who's not here today, and this, of course, y'all may or may not have been in the kickball games, some of the other bits, we have a lot of people, but specifically for the kickball games. When they do play, they use a lot of personnel that we're paying for. So the bottom line of it is, in each kickball game, each night they play on three fields for seven days, they have two referees in each one of those games, so they're playing six referees twice, so they're playing six referees, the two games, they're playing 12 games in play. They have three people keeping the scoreboards, and then they have other people out there that we have to show them all to administer this call event for about four hours. We have 11 people out there working. Again, as you all have, push-ups to do is to try to find a way, and some of these things that we have to leave is to at least break, even so that we're paying for referees and some of these other things that we can buy fees and or through concessions to help to offset some of these costs. Kickball is a big, a lot of people that come out here. We also have had to pay for private security. We have asked Chief Duvo as he can with his limited resources to help with that because we're out of money in the budget and in the parks and rent budget for security. So this is another cost that goes into having this event because there are so many people out there playing and building up the parks, both Sandy Davidson and at Northeast Park. So that is why we are going forward, trying to get some of the funds back to help offset some of our expenses. We will be looking at, again, to answer your question, Dr. Thomas, as we go with our budget, we will be communicating to you all some of the other fees that we may want to charge just like we charged lately, so that we can offset some of the costs of doing business. The other thing to answer all of you guys' questions is, we plan to give you all an M O U with those Phil Hart, with the Magnolia League, and with the Boys and Girls, on what you guys decide we can and can't pay for or look for. We have never, ever had these things in the last 20 years, but it has been a practice of the administration and of the council to partner with leagues to better the quality of life for young people in this city through our programs. And sometimes those associations in soccer, to baseball, and basketball, we have done that. Since it seems that we need to have something in writing with every organization that we help in any kind of way, we're going to do that, and we'll talk about it during the budget process. But to answer your question, this is why we're doing this towards the kickball.
I just, I didn't, I planned something that was easy to control, I just didn't know where it came from.
I just wanted to add, it's similar to the other events we do, we charge benefits and like that, it does help offset the costs, and we diligently take care of it like we do, you know, the other events that we have to offset.
That's good.
Do you vote? All in favor?
Ah, okay, okay, okay.
One minute.
So this is an instance where, for the first time, the administration has brought before the council the approval of admissions fees for a Parks and Rec event. There's still other events going on in the city and concessions and things of that nature that are still, money's being taken in that the council hasn't approved. And then there are other fees in the city that aren't being collected that should be. And so when you consider that there's very little accountability overall for cash deposits as it relates to admissions fees and the lack of council approval for certain admissions fees, such as the basketball game that I shared a video of previously, it's really difficult to understand if we're even operating properly as it relates to the city's policies and procedure, because we don't know of all of the instances where admissions are being taken that haven't been approved, but they're definitely happening. And so I guess I'm thankful that we finally were given the opportunity to approve admissions fees, but for the most part, this is still an issue that the auditor has highlighted for the past two years at least. If you look at the audit reports on the state auditor's website, you'll notice that for two years in a row now, they've highlighted that there's an issue with cash deposits, and I think in large part that stems from a lack of accountability with admissions fees being collected. So moving forward, there should be a little more uniformity in the way we do this, and looking forward to additional opportunities for the council to actually exercise our authority in approving or not approving of admissions fees. But furthermore, there should be more questions raised, I think, as to how the city's cash deposits are being handled, because when you look at the procedure so far, I think it's really a question of whether or not everything's being followed according to the handbook and according to the city standard operating procedures.